Good evening and welcome to the October 10th Board of Education meeting. If everyone would please join me to the Pledge to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin this evening with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for our October 10th Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone enjoyed the long weekend celebrating Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. For many of us, the pleasure of a long weekend was completely shattered by the horrific news and images coming out of the Middle East. Some of our students, teachers, and staff have family and friends in the region, and even for those who don't, the news is incredibly disturbing. Yesterday, I sent out a communication to families with information about counseling resources within the schools, and schools principals sent similar message to their teachers and staff. Teachers and staff will be watching out for any students who seem upset or anxious or in need. Just an update, late this afternoon, I sent up a follow-up email after speaking with a number of folks in the community about recent rumors and threats of things being shared with regard to hostages on social media, sent some resources to parents and shared that information so that parents can speak with their kids about social media and talk with them about what might show up on their social media feeds. And while many of us have strong opinions about the conflict, it's important to remember that the mission of the schools is to support all of the children of Rye. School is a place where all students and staff must be made to feel safe and welcome. In an increasingly polarized world, it's up to us, the adults in the room, to demonstrate this to our children. I know you all join me in my hope for a swift end to the conflict and for peace and justice to prevail. And for all those who have been impacted with lost family members, missing family members, injured family members and friends, I am very sorry. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Byrne. We will move on to our presentation and discussion number one, our 2023 -- no, 2022-2023 external audit.
Thank you for having me, everybody. My name is Justin Wood. I am from Newt and Housler Accounting Firm. We are the external auditors for the district. We did spend well over an hour last week with the audit committee going over the financial statements in detail, so I won't bore everyone here with all those details, and I'm sure the audit committee doesn't want to go over all that again anyway. But I do want to thank the audit committee for their extra commitment, because it is obviously an additional commitment for it. We do a pre-audit meeting in the spring, and then we do a, you know, the audit committee meeting for the review of the financial statements then in the fall, leading up to this presentation, which will be brief, I promise you that. So, within these financial statements are three opinions. One of them is on the basic financial statements. Another one is on the single audit, which is the audit of the federal war programs, and this year that was on the education stabilization grant. And the other is on the extra classroom activity funds. All three of the opinions were given an unmodified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion, which is our highest level of assurance that we can give, that the financial statements were free of material misstatement and error. You know, having said all that, I do want to thank Gabby and Kathy Vigiano, the district treasurer, for all the hard work that they did in allowing us to be able to provide this audit timely and accurately, and all of their staff as well. Everybody did an excellent job. The only thing that I would add is that the district is in very strong financial condition. They do have well-funded reserves, and I look forward to working with you all in the future. And I am available year-round for questions, as Gabby knows, so if anybody, or, you know, one-on-one discussion of any member of the board, if there's anything they'd like to discuss, Gabby has my personal information, and I welcome that. So, thank you all very much, and have a wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you to you for your, you know, excellent walkthrough the other night with the audit committee. It was extraordinarily clear and super helpful for us, so thank you for the work that you put in with the district. It was easy to follow.
Thank you.
And pleasurable. This is in, having done this for many, many, many years, I think this is, again, the lowest number of findings we've ever, ever had, and I think the one that you did find was cleaned up within minutes, if I remember correctly. So, it's, it was one of the best audits we've gone through. They've gotten ever better every year, and it was, it was great. The committee had it, was thrilled with the performance, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. And it was my first audit committee meeting, and I will agree with Chris, it was a great experience, and I was very happy, and I would suggest audit committee to all of my board members, because it's no policy, but it was pretty interesting.
In all seriousness, if you want to really dive into how the place operates, that that report is fantastic and that meeting. You learn so much in actually a relatively short amount of time about the ins and outs, so yeah, get, dive into it.
Yeah, it's very thorough, very well-done. It's an easy read for those of you who are not overly familiar with external auditing protocols, so.
And the full external audit report is actually attached to this agenda. It's one of the items in the fiscal section that we are asking the board to accept tonight in advance of our submission to the New York State Education Department, so all timely, because to do it up there on the 15th.
All right, well, we'll be a little in advance, so that's even better. Okay, great. So now we will move on to our book talk discussion. I'll turn it over to Dr. Byrne.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So we have a guest here this evening, two guests actually, Suzanne Short, our high school principal, and Garrett Renner, the director of K-12 school counseling. And before we begin the conversation part and the protocol, or the modified protocol, I had talked with Garrett, you know, I have a firsthand look at what's happening, and I shared a couple of weeks ago in my community update, what it's like to actually sit in on a meeting between a counselor and the family and a student, thanks to Garrett making that invitation. And I just sat quietly, I did not get involved, as Garrett can attest, but I thought it would be helpful before we launch into the discussion to hear about how we support post-secondary planning for our students and families. So we've got...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No? So Garrett, thanks so much for coming tonight, Suzanne as well.
First time. Yeah, so Eric, thank you for the invitation. Suzanne, thank you for your support. You will notice that I am the only high school counselor here. I would be remiss not to mention that one of our counselors right now is running a session with students for applications, and she, I think, is going to be planning on stopping by. We have another counselor who's preparing an evening presentation for Thursday, and then the rest of the staff are diligently working through the counselor letters of recommendations that we are furiously trying to get wrapped up here as, as our seniors are in the thick of submitting their applications, so.
I actually think in the book, there is a reference to what the month of October is called for counselors.
Yes.
You have to read the book to the end. If you don't know what I'm talking about, that was the test, and I know you didn't finish the book.
So, so while they're here in spirit, physically, they are not. But yeah, we just kind of wanted to take the opportunity, and while the school counseling program, K-12, but specifically in the high school, is, is about much more than solely post-secondary planning, that is a huge piece of what we're here to do. So, so we just kind of created a little bit of a snapshot on the slide here of some of the programming that we run through the office that supports helping, helping the children of the community, our students, to, to really kind of plan and understand and discover who they are while they are high school students, so they are best prepared for the expectations of whether it's undergraduate studies or the workforce, or whatever they choose to do moving forward. But we start this conversation, and we started with the eighth graders, which, which is a really nice entree into their transition into high school, in discussing the courses that they might want to explore as high school students. And, and this three-letter word that appeared fairly frequently in Jeff Salingo's book, but fit, is, is really an important part of that conversation and a theme throughout everything we see up here. But we always want students to consider the things that are important to them, the things that drive them, the things that they spend time doing, and we revisit that in each conversation that we have with kids and parents. And some of you have witnessed some of that recently in evening meetings and other things, as Eric mentioned, senior meeting last week. And then as we move into ninth grade, we host individual meetings, transition meetings, with every single ninth grade student. And we, in our office, kind of look at those conversations, well, those meetings more as conversations. There's not a ton of formal structure to those conversations. It's, it's really a getting to know you and getting to learn about the children who have just started as high school students here this fall, and have just taken a huge step in their, in their secondary educational experience. So, I'm, I've been guilty of telling students on multiple occasions that I'm not interested necessarily in how math class is going, while that's important. I really want to know, and I'm more interested in how you're spending your time when you're not in school. When you're not supposed to be in a class, what are you doing? What do you do with your friends? All conversations that, again, get kids thinking about the, the important things that they value and what they want to use in order to make decisions about their life and where they're going to go. So, those meetings are really important and really fun. Each year with every grade level, we do course request conversations, well, I should say grades nine through 11, 12 graders, we don't, we don't need to talk about classes for them for the following year. And those conversations are based on the same thing, like, what do you do well? Where do you want to push yourself? What are your interests, and how are they changing, right? That's, that's a big conversation in high school, taking the temperature of where the students are at that or any given time, and how it's evolving, because it should not stay stagnant. Things should change for kids, especially when you have the offerings that the high school has provided to students, we want them to explore, and, you know, it's not a bad thing for them to try something out and not like it, and learn that that's not a direction they want to go in. And then we kind of move forward into 10th grade, where we do some lessons with them. We just recently started info sessions with BOSI's, formal info sessions. Thankfully, the district and central administration has really supported Suzanne's desire and our desire to have kids explore those programs and, and understand what, what they're being offered. We just had a conversation this week about, and the end of last week, about moving that info session up to November, so we're trying to plan for November of this upcoming year, so that, again, students can have more information about what's available to them for exploration.
So Garrett, through the CTE, what are the kinds of, if you could just give a few examples to the board, the programs that our kids seem to be drawn to right now? I know we have Student Emergency Services, and we've got some, we've had some others, but from your recollection, just for our kids, what?
Yeah, it's, it's funny. So, we have nine kids there right now, and I was just in the coordinator's meeting this afternoon, and our Jeannie Romano was talking to me about a student who's in the culinary program, and she was talking about how much this student loves his experience in that culinary program, and how excited he is to talk about different recipes and, and different things he's exploring and trying out with the program, and how, how it is broadened and expanded on his individual personality, and, and just open things up for him. So culinary is one, definitely. There's cosmetology. There are quite a few that, if I were to attempt the names at, because they're a little bit technical, I would screw up, but there's sound production, and I'm definitely forgetting a variety of others. Sorry? Yes, automotive, that's been a, a big draw in the past. Thank you, Mrs. Short. So there's a really, a really good portfolio and, of different programs available, and the technology that they use in those programs is highly advanced, so it's really, it's really great to, again, to know that we can bring people in to talk more about those programs, to, to kind of sell it to students. We're planning on, for the first time this year, exposing the current ninth graders to those programs, so that they're not hearing of it first, for the first time as sophomores, when sophomores kind of really should be a little bit further in that process, in their exploration, because by kind of midway through sophomore year, we're, we're kind of seeing engaging with students who are really serious about potentially participating in the program as juniors. And then, of course, as juniors, we do a whole curriculum that spans the second semester, the spring semester, with our Imagine Your Future curriculum. It is foundationally based on self-awareness, self-reflection, and, and knowing enough about yourself as an individual, so that, again, you can make the appropriate decisions moving forward that are going to benefit you in whatever you choose to, to pursue in life after high school. That's accompanied by a series of evening events, some practical tools as well, resume workshops, personal essay writing, things like that, mock interviews, which we're very gracious to the community, because we always get a great turnout of parent volunteers who help us run those evenings, three evening sessions in the spring. And then before we know it, we are, we are in the fall of senior year. So despite what some might think, by the fall of senior year, seniors do not have their lives planned out. So while we have individual hour-long senior meetings to discuss a little bit of logistics piece of what we do and how we do it, because that part is very specific and very important, but also where students are in that conversation, how far along in the process are they? I've had conversations this year where we kind of had to stop, and, and we, we weren't at a place, the student wasn't at a place where they were ready to, to move forward and, and talk through what the plan for, for next year was going to be, but we had to, we had to take a step back and, and talk in a different direction about things that were, were weighing on them, so that we can kind of clear that up before we move forward. So, so it's all about gauging, again, where students are, where families are, how we can help in the process. But that's the approach we take basically in all of our conversations. We've got, formally, we're planning the schedule, just under 1,400 meetings with students this year, and even when those conversations have nothing to do with post-secondary planning, we are interested in hearing about and want students to be thinking about, there is a next step. There is a reason why I'm choosing to participate in this event or engage with this team sport. So it's just, we feel it's good practice. We feel that it's a necessity in order for them to, to determine the right fit, right, for, for what they're going to do in the future. So that's kind of a little snapshot overall view on, on what we're doing as school counselors on a regular basis. And then I think I'll turn it back over to you guys.
Well, Garrett, thanks so much for that snapshot. It really is a snapshot, because sitting in and actually being a part of one of those meetings was so enlightening, and thank you again for that. Any questions for Garrett before we relieve him and jump to the book?
I had a question about the number of students that the counselors work with. Am I right? I was just jotting down some notes. If there's, let's say, 240 kids per class, so does each count, if there's six counselors, so does each counselor have, let's say, 40 kids that they're covering in each class, meaning they have 40 freshmen, 40 sophomores, 40 juniors, 40 seniors? Is that how the math works out roughly?
That's the idea.
Okay.
Doesn't always work out that way perfectly with transfers in, transfers out, but yeah, Debbie's applicant in our office, and I should mention her and Angaletta are a big part of what we do on a regular basis, but she focuses very intently on keeping the caseloads as balanced as possible, so not only overall numbers, but by individual grade levels as well, so yeah.
And if we've been doing that for a very long time, is that the most efficient way to do it, so that obviously you wouldn't want one counselor having all seniors, because having to write the recommendation letters? Is that a common practice at most schools, do you find?
Yeah, good, good question. It's, it definitely varies from high school to high school. I think what we've seen direct from, from this model, because we haven't been under this model forever, and I don't think it's good to do anything the same way forever, right? But the, the continuity that, just in my direct experience, that I see with knowing where a freshman is when they walk in, in that first transition meeting that I have with them, as compared to who they are in their junior meeting, their individual junior meeting, or their individual senior meeting, that gives me a context that other models don't always allow for. So for example, there, there's the model out there that the ninth grade are separate, and they all, the entire grade has that one counselor assigned to the ninth grade. In that model, I miss out on seeing that growth for that first year for that student, for all, all of my students who are now seniors. So that's one of the benefits, direct benefits, that we see as counselors on a daily basis. Also, the, the families have reported to us in the community that, that continuity of not having to switch counselors at any point, well, for most of them, not, not having to switch counselors throughout high school, has been a, a good tool for them, and it has allowed them to have a greater deal of comfort in talking with the same person year in and year out. And I believe that it's allowed families to maybe open up and share some things that, that maybe they wouldn't get to if we had a little bit less time together.
Thank you.
Well, Garrett, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate the time and, and the planning. So with regard to the book talk, so just, we're not going to follow the protocol exactly as we know from tradition, but you recall Jeff Salingo will be in Rye a couple of days in November, and on November 29th, will be presenting. It's a collaboration with Rye Country Day School, and it will be the 29th in the evening at Rye Country Day. I'm assuming in their gym, if you went to see Frank Bruny a number of years back, it's a big space, so they were able to fit a lot of folks. So with tonight's protocol, the idea is similar to some that we've done in the past, is whoever chooses to go first, we're not going to split into groups, we'll be one group, and whoever would like to go and share something that was significant in the reading of the text with the rest of the group, and then we'll open up for a few minutes for, and you just share, you just read it aloud, and then anyone around the table can make comments based on that feedback. Once the comments are done, it goes back to the individual that read, and then you get to have the last word.
Okay.
Any questions? I'll try to be the timekeeper and the moderator, but I will just open it up for all of you. Thanks again, Garrett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
Any volunteers to go first?
Sure. I'll start with, I have a couple, but I'll start with the early one, and it's the line that jumped out that kind of frames the entire thing, and it simply says, "Top colleges are inundated with more well-qualified students than they can accommodate."
True.
I'm not allowed to speak now until the end, right?
That's right, last word.
Yeah. The math doesn't lie.
Numbers don't lie. Really, that's, that's nothing.
So, so I would counter that with the reason why they are inundated with more students than they can accommodate, which is where I will go, but I'm not going to go there yet. And it's, it's the, it's the realization of that college admissions is a big business.
And knowing both of those things to be true at the same time, it only becomes, it seems to me, more important that as the student, the one who will actually go to college, or wherever they go, that there is a lot of involvement and engagement and authority and ability to make those decisions about where that child wants to go and end up, because if it's, if there's a gazillion people applying, and it's really a big business, then neither of those things actually matter at the end of the day. What do I want to get out of this experience should be the driving force.
Yeah, I have, down in my notes, big business too, but just to, what Chris was saying to validate that point, I mean, I think when, I was thinking back when I was applying to schools, you applied to maybe five, you know, I don't know, four, five, six maybe schools. You know, now it's, I don't know if it's 15 or 20, my oldest is a junior, so I'm about to go through all this, but the, the numbers are just astronomical, and I think, you know, there's, he describes a lot of things, but the common app is, is, you know, one big factor. And so then we talk about, then the schools are trying to figure out who's likely to come, and, and the numbers game, so the numbers have just, you know, they've grown exponentially. And then, you know, the school's seeing all these qualified candidates, because now they're getting, instead of 15,000, 20,000 applications, they're getting 60,000 applications. So it's just the sheer volume of the numbers, I think, is really hard for students to manage, families to manage, for colleges to manage, and so we're kind of, we're in this, you know, we're in this predicament right now of, of how to wade through all of that.
Well, in building on the business, what I liked about the book, it was kind of unpacking how, the evolution of the ranking system, and how we think about the most, the top elite colleges, and how those reputations were earned, and a lot of it was, you know, is hard to parse through as a parent or as a reader of why some of these top-ranked colleges, you have, you have deans of colleges who read the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings and said, okay, it's the most important thing to have these five characteristics nationally drawing students. And so then they, they shift their marketing, and they jump up in the ratings, and so it's, it's trying to parse through as a parent, and as a community member, what does it mean to be the best college? You know, is it defined by these metrics that were determined by, you know, sort of more of like a capitalist or a system? And one thing that jumped out to me that, you know, kind of piggybacks on what Chris said, was the idea that now there are so many applications, and it's, the top 20% selective schools get over 33% of the applications. And so the point that you're making is, at the top, you know, kind of elite, most selective schools, you know, there, they actually do have to let kid, you know, say no to kids that are more than, you know, exceptionally skilled to go to that school, but that over the last 50 years, I have written down, half of the American colleges have actually become less selective in admissions, because the best prospective students are applying to this same small group of elite schools. And so you're kind of understanding the breadth of what's available as a community and as a parent is really important.
You got the last word, Garrett.
Yeah, there's no fixing this. There, it's not Duke's fault that they get 40,000 applications for 2,000 spots, very rough numbers, they have 5%. It's not their fault, and you're not going to, and they have no incentive to stop it, good for them. They get 100 bucks per application, that's $4 million revenue. You're, you're not going to put that genie back in the bottle. It's the selection process that people's like, why do we pick this small group of colleges? I'll go to what Garrett said, when, when you start thinking, I've been through this process, or I've been through it two and a half times, because I'm in the middle of it now with my third kid. I lived this book, I could have, you know, spouted some of the stuff off, especially the stuff about Tulane the stuff about two-laneing two kids. The kid who, it's clearly a safe school, and you don't get in because it's a safety, and then the whole ED, and if you switch your application, the ED now will tell you in two weeks, it works. The, if you listen to what Garrett said, the theme of having our kids figure out who they are and what they want, when you start looking for a school because of the things you want, that whole list of the top 10, 20, 30 elite schools in the country goes away. Where do I want to go? I want to go down south. Do I want to go to a big school? I want to go to a big school, or I want to do this at a school. When you take that, when it's a student-driven, customer-driven approach, the world changes, because it's no longer, as I started, what do I have to do to get into Duke? What do I have to do to get into Harvard? What do I, it doesn't, you're never going to change this math until you change the demand cycle. What we demand, what schools we demand to go to, is what drives that. So to have faith in the kids, support the kids, have them go down this journey of figuring out who they are, what they want, and then this process goes away. I'm quite proud, my third, who has got the grades and the scores to apply to any school in the country, has, is not following that path to the elite schools, because she's figured out what she wants to do. And it works. Thank you. I think that's next.
Great. My passage is on page 93 to the top of 94, and it talks about merit versus achievement. It's at the bottom of page, so I'll read the passage, it's a paragraph. What's more, parents especially tend to conflate merit with achievement. I can't tell you how often I've heard parents say how hard their child worked on a score of 90 on an algebra test, finished an English literature paper, or won the 800-meter dash in track. Parents mistake achievement, often associated with one specific and fixed event in the past, with merit. That's why colleges typically weigh the score on the four-hour SAT, achievement, less than the grades earned over four years of high school, which would be merit. Watching, this is, the author says, "Watching the reviews of applications and listening to administrators, admissions officers' description of merit over eight months, I came to understand the term defines a mindset they look for in an applicant, rather than a specific attribute. They're looking for signs, and applicant refuses to acknowledge a ceiling on her or his ability, and keeps persevering at tasks."
And that one jumped out to me, well, I remember, I remember reading that, I thought that was an interesting take on things. And I love that, like, trying to figure out what the kid's made of, like, are they someone who's really going to try to persevere through this? So I think that perspective of how do you make that come through in an application is so much more. And I, you know, it kind of touches on a lot of themes you hear throughout here, is that when they reject someone, it's because they're just an academic, they're narrow. You know, and they got the scores, but they didn't have anything else going on. I think that all speaks to some of that same, what you're trying to project in an application is so much more than just the grades and the scores.
And I think that's the difficult part, right? There is no application, there is no test, there is no grade that is going to be reflective of any student's ability to persevere or to find their passion and to become whatever they are meant to become. And I think that's, you know, I think about myself as a senior in high school, and who and what I was able to achieve. Those things do not match. They just don't. Who I wasn't, no. And so, like, and I won't say it out loud, I mean, I'm, you know, pretty unfiltered, but I won't even say this out loud, that where people were telling me, and what they were telling me I was going to be able to do and become, is laughable when I see what I have done and where I have gone and what I have done. And it was only because of my father, who took me out of that meeting and said, I'll filter what he says, that person's an idiot, you are way more than what they want you to believe you are. And that is the fit. That is knowing that kid from ninth grade to 12th grade to say, hot diggity dog, who are you now? You aren't who you showed up when you were a freshman. Nobody is who they are when they show up as a freshman. Let's hope they're not, right? If they are, we've failed them as a community, as a school, as teachers, as educators. So this idea, I, it frustrates me. This whole thing frustrates me, that as much as I would love to believe that my kids or any kid is going to know exactly what they're going to want to study when they go to college, and who and what they're going to be, and that somehow in their application they're going to be able to really show their merit versus their achievement, that's not life, that's not real. And so this idea that you have to come to a formula or a package to make yourself attractive to somebody to say, you're good enough to come here, is really frustrating in a way. Right? Like, because everybody has the ability, once they find the thing that gets them excited, and the thing they can do, and the thing they're interested in, and it's just frustrating because not everybody's ready at the same point, right? And so we have to, though, put these, it's difficult when you're confined to certain parameters that don't necessarily, aren't really reflective of everything you've got, right? And that's a frustrating process about applying for jobs, applying for schools, applying in life, right? It's just, it's the conundrum.
Well, that's what I was going to say, it is life. You've got to be able to tell a story. You've got to be able, in an interview, a job interview, getting something, you've got to be able to tell a story that's different, that you are capable of doing.
Yeah, but in a job interview, at least, it's like, you know, I get to talk. I can talk, you guys know that, I can talk all day long. Just to be succinct in a passage, in a paragraph, that's going to be harder.
I think I went and interviewed at every school I applied to, which that just doesn't exist anymore.
I interviewed at none. And somebody still chose me.
I would also, I think the, what concerns me about that passage is to talk about, I guess even thinking about the SAT as a measurable piece. I know that they're framing it as the one time that you can be tutored for, and that you can, you know, learn all the tricks in and out for, that you can be just an exceptional tester. And I think the other piece that I found interesting throughout the book, that was that while even, you know, while they're framing this as just a one-time achievement, they also talked about it a lot in the admissions process as a confirmation of the merit. So that's a mixed message also, within this whole dynamic of, you know, it just creates a very uncertain, and uncertain, uncertain process, and then I think it also creates a dynamic of the individual who's in it feeling powerless.
Well, I think that the uncertainty piece, I want to jump on that, because you're never going to get past the uncertainty. If there are 10 qualified people for each spot, even if you do everything perfectly, you have a 10% chance of getting it. Like, there's a randomness because of the overwhelming numbers at the schools we pick as being the ones we need to get to, that it doesn't matter. You can tell a perfect story, you could be the perfect candidate and have everything that spot requires, but there's 10 of you for each one.
Right.
That's, you cannot get past that. Like, there's no making this process fair and perfect, because you still have too many people for all the ones we're looking for.
Right, well, I mean, first of all, nothing's fair and perfect. So.
No, no, yeah, I'm saying, if you could make it.
But I think that the piece where I disagree with you on your first point, that comes back to, around to this, is that, you know, these educational institutions have taken on an element of big business that was not always part of their models. And so, yes, well, only for them, they can get $100 per application from every kid.
And we pay it.
From every kid who decides, this is the school that I need, I need to at least apply to this because X, Y, or Z. Whatever the factors are that play into that, it could be a number of things. And I think we're talking a lot about, we're touching on a lot of the reasons why you want to broaden out from that, because of the numbers, because of a variety of things. But the emphasis on the marketing around higher education has shifted, in my view, and is confirmed in this text, in a way that it did not exist before. And I think that adds to a layer of this, the pressure around this process, so, because, you know, maybe all of those schools would have been schools that would have gotten top numbers of applications before, but I'm going to get it wrong now, it's in here somewhere, where he talks about the number of, like, the selectivity of schools over time. Like Johns Hopkins accepted, Johns Hopkins University accepted 53% of applicants back in 1988. It now accepts 11. And part of the reason for that is not that they have less spots, it's that they have marketed themselves to the ends of the earth to get people chasing something that they are not going to be able to give them anyway.
Yeah, but every school markets, we literally had cases of the mailings our kids got.
But you didn't get those when you were applying to college.
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm saying, it's a huge shift.
But it's not just coming from Duke and Hopkins and the elite, you're getting them from thousands, hundreds and hundreds of schools are reaching out to you. I think, I mean, two things, right? There are more applicants, we've doubled the applicant pool at least in a short amount of time. And those, the applicants are applying to more schools because of the Common App. So you do have some of that natural fit. It wouldn't matter if there were the same number of spots and the same number of applicants, and they all filled out 100, you'd get to where you were getting to, even because there's more applicants, you've still got the same number of spots and the same, we do have more students than spots. And we've seemed to have limited down the number of schools that, well, that's not true, but there's a small number that we are putting on our lists of saying, these are the ones I'm willing to go to, right? I think that's the element there. I can't blame the schools for that, it's not their fault. What would you have, what would you have an Ivy League do differently in this, in this world? Not, I don't know, what would they have to do differently?
So I just think it's a, I think the element of how this has shifted and evolved is a critical piece of information that people need to be aware of and understand in how it shapes what occurs with the application process. That's my point with this. Look, we, we're not going to change what they're doing, and, you know, that is the reality. I just think it's going into it eyes wide open, so that you are very aware of all of those pieces at play. Being educated about this process is probably one of the best things that anyone can do as, before they enter it.
Unfortunately, one of the, the logical mathematical answer is to do more applications. Unfortunately, the logic leads you to do more applications.
Do more applications and have the right mindset around it. But I mean, I think there's some stuff, you know, we talk back to, oh, how it was when we were, but there's, I think there are a number of things that, I don't want to say better, because I don't want to make it all normative, but like, for example, when I was applying to school, coming out of the Midwest from a high school that nobody really knew about, and was trying to go to like, the elite places, where my test scores blew away their averages, and I wasn't getting in those schools, because I didn't, and I knew I wasn't going to get in those schools, because I didn't have a connection, I didn't have a name school, whatever. That has flipped in some ways. So the inside, I mean, there are certainly elements of the inside game that still work, but I, part of my takeaway is this, is actually the inside game is less of a guaranteed route anymore. And to many ways, being from the random school now, like, the elite schools are actually out, you know, hunting for those type, as opposed to just like, okay, yeah, okay, elite high school over here, I'll just grab 50 of them. Now I'm only going to grab maybe 15 of them, and I'll take the random kids from around the country more. So that doesn't strike me as bad. You know, that, of course, is in coordination with the whole, the whole numbers have gone, and the numbers have gone up because the population has gone up. You know, the list of schools that we consider elite, there's more colleges and universities out there, but of the ones that we consider the elite, I don't think, I don't think that has increased proportionally to the amount of sheer people there are, both domestic and foreign, as well as, again, multiple applications.
We've added more schools into that world. I think when I was, you know, when I was in high school, I don't, you know, Michigan, Duke, UVA, they weren't considered these, you know, impossible gets and elite schools, they were very reachable.
Okay.
I guess for you.
I'm older than all of you.
I'll take you back to the conversation I have with my high school counselor.
I had the same impression.
We already heard about your test scores, Tom, we know. Thank you, duly noted. And it's now public record.
Sean, you just have to.
It didn't get me in.
So the one thing I would say about Callie's passage is, you do have to make that distinction between the achievement versus the merit, and what are they looking for? It's, you know, they want the merit to tell the story marked by achievements. But even outside of that, the problem is, regardless of the achievements and the merit that the application shows and the story it tells, they're trying to predict the future of how the student will do at their university. And with the whole concept of the holistic admissions, and they can look and decipher it in any way they want to, like, that doesn't even really help you narrow down and hone in on what you're trying to show with your application necessarily. It's total crapshoot.
Yeah, so I agree with what everybody said. I would say, when I was reading this passage, when I was thinking about the achievement part, it resonated with me, like, just thinking about, like, all the trophies the kids are collecting over time versus the merit is the process and the learning and the skills they're acquiring, you know, the critical thinking and all the skills that they're going to take out into the world besides their trophy. They're obviously not going to take that with them. So, you know, I appreciated this concept, because it talked about, you know, or at least to me, it was resonating, it's the classes you're taking, it's the rigorous course load, it's, you know, your different interests outside of also your academics and things like that. And then to Sean's point, you know, what the school's trying to do is to see, are you going to contribute to this community, this college community? And so I think they're trying to put those pieces together. So to me, it, you know, it reaffirmed what we're doing here at the schools, and the skills that we're teaching the kids. And it's not just, you know, the trophies are great, but it's not just acquiring the trophies, it's, you know, why are you acquiring the trophy? What are the skills you're learning when you're acquiring that? And then also, later in the book references the Common App, and again, I haven't been through it, but I think there's like 10 spots or something for activities that the kids fill out. And so they're just so focused on like, let me, you know, acquire these 10 activities, but why are you acquiring the activities? Again, it's the story, it's the, it's the journey. It's not just this moment in time of these achievements, it's the whole, it's the whole process.
You have to figure out which ones not to put on there.
Okay.
Because you only have 10.
Got it.
Who would like to go next? I'll go next. I mean, one of the things that jumped out to me the most, and it wasn't a single line or passage, but something that just showed up in many, 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 many instances throughout the book, and is the, and you alluded to it a little bit already, the randomness and subjectivity of this. Now, there is a whole systematic nature of it, there is for every college, they've got their 25 to 75 percentile, and if you're not in that, like, good luck, you're probably not going to make it. But that still leaves 25% below, that's a large number. And all of the individual sort of case study examples, the people he followed, and talking about how individual applicants were shuffling people, and the amount of randomness and subjectivity in that, and especially because even in the 25 to 75, as to your point earlier, there's, you know, 10 times the number of people who fit into that category, so only 10% of them, or 5% of them, or 20%, whatever the number is at your schools, are getting in. And how they're parsing and dicing between them is just so, you know, I mean, I don't think there's much other way to say random. I mean, and it may be systematic at a certain time for a certain school, which is, oh, we've decided, we've looked over the whole profile, and we need more of these. So, but the, what they need more of is there's a randomness, and then if you fit that, then great, your odds just skyrocketed dramatically. And if you don't fit it, then you're someone who could fit the profile. And I think the story of that, which, you know, for kids, is to, you know, help them understand that, so that, you know, focusing on a, hey, this is my school, and I'm going to have an emotional attachment if I don't get into this, versus, I may be fully qualified for this, but I need to have a spread of them, and there's a chance I may not still may not even get into any of that. And, and there's a chance I may not still, may not even get into any of them, and not to take it as like a personal judgment on them, as opposed to a, you know, it's, it's the game. It's the game that's going on right now.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Not taking it personally when you reject it.
I know easier said than done, but.
No, no, I think your point is so well taken, and it is such an important part of the process of, of, you know, teaching the kids that, that it is random, and to a lot of it, you cannot take it personally. Do not get hung up on one place. Or that's could be, yes, toxic.
I think there was a great example of a student that he followed and then talked to post all of the exception, or acceptances or rejections. And, and I think she talked about regretting, feeling, being so invested in an idea. It was an idea of something, less so than a concrete understanding of what she would get out of being at any particular school. So, yeah.
I think that's a great, I remember that passage really well, and, and it goes to the point of not knowing, right? Like, how do you know you fit somewhere? You've never been there. It's like, we tell ourselves stories and we convince ourselves that this is the place I need to be. And it's, it's completely manufactured until you've lived through it.
It's also hard developmentally for 17, 18-year-olds to be able to do some of this stuff.
Well, that's the thing that's like so frustrating when you read this, because it is random, it is abstract, but yet it is systemic, and there are big businesses and systems and processes and beliefs in between and among students and adults and others that somehow this is, is really a statement of who you are. And that couldn't be less true. But yet, there are books and magazines and television shows and people who get paid hundreds of thousands of dollars and they're on TikTok and they've got all these ideas and they're going to tell you how to do it. For what? Like, for them, for me?
For money.
Right, to make money off of children. 16, 17, 18-year-old children who don't really know and don't have the requisite skills yet to understand that it's not about you. They needed 12 more oboe players. So you may have been the genius of all geniuses and you discovered the genetic code, but they needed 12 oboe kids, and so you're out, sister. Like, that's, it's just so upsetting to think about that this is, you know, especially for kids who are just like toiling every day and trying and they believe that, I've got to get straight A's and I've got to do this. And then it's like, no, it just needed more oboes. How do you, how do you, and how do you help that kid not take it personal? How do we help these kids who we already know are struggling so mightily in their social and emotional wellness that now we've just created these whole systems where we're just going to, like, really? This is crazy to me. Sorry, I'm ranting.
And that's what was good as the book wrapped up, starting to go into some of the data, to talk about the power of the individual. So some of the data, for example, was, let's follow a group of students who had the same grades and the same sort of resume from high school. Maybe they all got into the same schools, some chose to go the elite path, and some, for their personal choices, went to schools that weren't as well-known, whether, you know, if they got into them. And that those students, because of what they were able to accomplish in high school, they, that achievement post-college didn't, wasn't defined by the college they went to, but was defined by that person and their intrinsic motivation and how they earned all those achievements in high school, they were able to just repeat that no matter where they ended up. So sort of as a community empowering the individuals and, you know, and sort of separating that, you know, part of your identity as, you know, being at an elite school or not, that there is this power of who I am, how I can make choices, how I can be motivated to accomplish goals, that defines me. And they had a lot of data in the book, which I appreciated, sort of reiterating that point.
That's actually my second passage.
I think it's also, like, the word elite, and this isn't about you using the word, sorry, it was just you said it, and it just, it's like a trigger. Because then you're saying to kids who don't go to these elite schools, well, you're not elite. Well, you don't know what I am. Just because I didn't want, it's like, it's like the comment, right, that, well, the valedictorian or the salutatorian must go to an Ivy League school. Why? That doesn't make me any less intelligent or capable or hardworking or dedicated or interested in learning because I didn't go to a school that somebody, somebody at some point determined was elite.
Right.
And I think we do all of ourselves a disservice when we refer to schools, just as when we do a disservice when we talk about people as being the smart one, the athletic one, the this one, the that one. Everybody and everyone is more than a label. Sorry.
Tom's both, so you can't just pick one for him.
I mean, he clearly has stated his genius and his eliteness. So he's the only one we can refer to as both.
I'll just add, I think it's also.
Oh, now you say it, under your breath with the radar on. It's okay.
I've seen it three times already.
Just to add on to what Kelsey was saying too, I think it's important to be realistic. I think this book, you know, is such a wonderful resource for parents because it gives so much information about the process from, you know, looking at it from the college side, but also in terms of making smart choices as, you know, a student and as parents helping guide our children in terms of, you know, you know, look at the numbers, look on the website, you know, where do you fit in? Don't apply, you know, it's fine to apply to a couple like reach schools, but don't, you know, apply to all reach schools. And also look to see where other kids in your school are applying and how you stack up against them too. Don't, you know, there's a reference in the book about, you know, if you're kind of in the middle of the pack and so many of your fellow students apply to this one school, well, maybe that's not the school to apply to for like early decision because your chances are, so just educating, you know, yourself as a parent and as a student and with the, you know, support of the school counselors so that we could, you know, help our children make realistic choices as well and set their expectations.
I think, just one last comment on what Kelsey said, because I think the, that data set that he put in there about where those graduates landed and their earning potential too, because I think that was a lot of, how they measured it was, were they, were they comparable? And, and I feel like that is one of the things that I hear a lot in the argument of, well, these 25, 30, 40, whatever it is, schools are going to help my child have a better earning potential or have a better job opportunity. And I think that set of data helped to dispel some of that.
Yeah.
When it comes down to your ability, once you're in the environment that you're in and you apply yourself with all of the skills that you've learned in your life to date that you will then continue to apply to what you do post-college and post-education, that those are the key pieces of it, not so much the institution. And there was a specific set of companies and stuff that he talked about that barely even look at where someone went to school. Maybe not all industries, but many of the larger companies that are out there.
I think it's a great, I said it was the second one I wrote down, but it's, the students make the school, the schools don't make the students. So if you're the person who has the capability, if you did crack the DNA code when you were a senior high school, it doesn't matter where you go to school. And you continue to do that work, you're going to be, you're going to be successful and you're going to be the smartest one wherever you are. I think that's such a powerful message for, for the kids is that if they're the ones who, if you're the one who can put the resume together and the application that gets into any of these schools that are just impossible to get into, you're going to do fine wherever you go. You don't need to go to one of them.
Yeah, I think, you know, the last word on this point related to the randomness and subjectivity, it's kind of things you've already made, Chris, but one of the lessons is, the first thing is, you know, think about the fit. What do you want? And, because that may result in, yeah, it doesn't matter. I'm not, the schools I'm looking for fit into this thing and, and my profile is good, I'll, you know, got five or six I should probably get into and be fine, and that's great. But the other side of it is, you know, if, if it doesn't look that way and you're, the schools you want to is like, oh, you know, I've got a chance, I'm in the profile, but it's your point. The, the smart move is apply as many as you want. That's, that's not, I mean, you know, and it's, it's the thing he seemed to try to like and play in the book and people talk about, it's like, oh, you know, the world would be a better place if people applied to those schools. Yes, it would be. That doesn't mean it's the smart individual move.
It's not the logical choice.
So, it's, you know, there's, it's, yeah.
Who would like to jump in next?
Happy to read my passage. So I guess I would go to page 251 for the passage that jumped out to me, and it's the bottom half of the page. It says, "The students I found who were the happiest with the way things had turned out were able to maneuver through the unpredictability of life after their senior year and embrace a new school or two near the top of their list rather than remaining entranced with the luster of the best brands as crowned by some magazines and websites. For a few of the seniors I met in high school and across the country who were accepted at their first choice colleges, they were often, that were often among the most selective in the nation, but you know what? They didn't end up skipping college or did they end up at Podunk U. In the end, they discovered there's no such thing as a perfect fit." And I think, for me, going through this book where, oh wait, I'm not supposed to talk now. Let everybody else talk.
Good self-correcting on the protocol there, Kelsey.
I think that speaks to a lot of what you were saying before, Tom, it's like, you've got to be, you cannot be stuck on one, right? There is no, there is no perfect fit and you've got to, you've got to be able to, the list you pick has to, you have to be happy with it from top to bottom. Because if you go someplace, and it's this intrinsic motivation, if you're happy with your choice and you, and you feel comfortable that you've made a good choice and you have fit and you're going to have a good experience, then you're much more likely to have a good experience. If you go in saying, oh, this is the last place I wanted to get into, this is going to suck, it's much more likely to suck.
Yeah, I think the scary thing about some of that though relates to the, the rise in importance of, of early decision processes and things like that. Which again, if you absolutely know and, you know, you can zero in on one because you've been thinking about this since you were 14 years old and you're just fully, like, great, that it's great for you. But I'm reasonably positive, there's lots and lots of kids who, in that journey, go through various different thinkings because, you know, let's be honest, how many kids are really focused on this when they're 14, 15, 16, 17 versus, it's two weeks until applications are due, now you have to make a decision. And then, once you get into that process, and then as some months go by and you get new things and whatever, then it becomes real and then you maybe unlock and focus on your thing. But if you've already early decided back in November, and again, that's going to work out for a lot of people, but it may lock some people into, if they had followed the process and let, may have come to a more organic, or actually, I lean more towards this than this.
Yeah. So having, having gone through it with my oldest in ED1, then an ED2, and then a different school, which ended up being excellent fit, thrilled that the, in the end, everyone is happy that ED1 and ED2 did not work out. And then going through it with my, my second, and this is the Tulane story where you get deferred, but if you switch to ED, we'll tell you in two weeks. And I was adamantly opposed, like, I want, again, back to intrinsic motivation, I want you to get into a few schools, then you're going to accept at Student's Day and they're selling to you. And you're in the driver's seat and you're the one being courted, and that creates all that positive energy because you're doing the choosing, not the other way around. Well, we had, the Tulane option popped up, and there were a lot of nights of, I mean, real soul searching. It's like, convince me that, that you've gone through this process now, that this really is the place you want to be. And, and he did a very good job of doing it, and it worked out. He's had a great experience at Tulane, hurricanes notwithstanding, and saltwater intrusion, which we hope.
Hurricanes.
Oh, and, and the pandemic, yeah, that was a little troublesome at the beginning.
Really selling.
Yeah, actually, I'll tell you, here's a really, even a better story. And I, my son knows, he's happy for me to tell you stories. We did the ED, we flipped the switch. They then admitted him as a spring scholar and released him from the ED obligation. So we went to Italy during the pandemic for his first semester and had a, well, he was locked down for like five weeks and got no credits, but he had a really good time in Rome. So you can't map this stuff out, people. It's a very winding path. The ED thing is interesting, right? You understand, especially, and I use Tulane as a great example because that's everybody's safety school. I mean, we've had years where we've had students who had none of it, like, lots of applications, no one went there. And Rye had a problem for a while because I think that had, they had a reputation at Tulane for being a school that it was everybody's safety school. And a lot of really good students will put it on there as a safety school, and they know that. So then managing their yield is, is an incredibly difficult proposition. They don't really know how they do it. Because if you're off by 5%, you've got real dormitory problems and class size problems. So I understand why they do it and I understand what they're trying to get to, but it does make it very, very challenging. And you're right, what kid really knows?
Well, I, so I, I would say I don't know that kids know, but I wouldn't discount the kids think about it.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think there is the element of this sort of aura around college among kids who are very, very young. And, you know, I think that's sort of the piece that gets a little lost in this whole discussion is that there's all of these pieces of it that are very frustrating for us as adults, and, you know, we're looking at, you know, elements of making decisions about ED and, you know, big school, small school, whatever. So we're, you know, we think about it from the adult perspective very logically in that way. And yet you have kids who have been experiencing for many years kind of this message of, well, these are the places that you really need to be thinking about, whether it's because of what everyone's wearing on their sweatshirts or what everybody's talking about or where their parents went to or, so I think we always have to keep in mind the, the human element for these kids who, as, as, as we sit here and talk about our frustrations as adults about the process, for them, I think it's incredibly, I would imagine, it's incredibly difficult to think of the process as an experience that they will then draw on for the future without feeling a lot of very difficult feelings about themselves and the world that they're in. If they get caught up into it without there being kind of like some other elements of the world around them that can draw them out. I think about the, the book talk that we went to last week, where I saw you had the book there.
I'll be making a text to text.
I would imagine you would be. And, and it talks, she, the author talked a lot about this concept of grounding yourselves, kids being able to ground themselves in things other than singular motivations and singular next steps. So I just, it just occurred to me as we were sitting here talking about this, that I think that that piece is, is one that complicates this process even more.
And the, the part of the passage that I got stuck on is where it talks about the students who were happiest were the ones who were able to maneuver through the unpredictability of life. There, it is an abstract, random process, it is a business, there is nothing in life that is certain. And so, again, going back to a higher level of what really is the most important thing that we should be helping kids understand is find a place that fits and understand that this is completely unpredictable, as is life, and we need to build the requisite skills for how we handle adversity, unpredictability, and uncertainty. Because this is, this is just today's issue, right? We're going to have lots of issues that we have to get through. And let's find the happiness in getting through unpredictability.
So I appreciate everyone's thoughts on the passage. I, Jane, I think you summed it up very well. I think for me, this spoke to me so much because it talks, it does get to the heart of things, which is as a community, as a parent, having those conversations with our students and just, and letting them understand that that skill is extraordinarily important in this moment and, you know, truly in every moment. So I really appreciated Garrett's presentation tonight, talking about the touchpoints from early, you know, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, we are, as a grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. We are, as a school community, addressing the need for this skill, which, you know, we are blessed with so many resources in our community and, um, we have so many motivated students and, you know, it just leaves me hope, you know, the kids, our kids are going to do well. They're thriving. And when they have these skills continue to be embedded and strengthened for them, you know, the world is their oyster. And that's exciting. As confusing and hard as this book makes it seem.
I can go next. Um, I kind of have two passages separated by a few pages. Um, and the one first sentence really just kind of sets the context for what my real quote is. Um, but it starts with, "Thirty years ago, the fall marked the beginning of the college search process for nearly everyone. Today, for many drivers, it marks the end." And then the quote that, um, really, really stuck with me is talking about in context of the teenage brain. Every month in high school is mentally like a year to adults. As a result, moving everything up even by just a few months to meet earlier deadlines curtails the student's performance, especially on the SAT and ACT.
That's interesting. I haven't really thought about the timeframe shift of when we do all this stuff. I don't remember what month I took the SAT. It's a long time ago.
Oh, I remember.
There's a lot of things I've forgotten within that.
It was the fall and I was unhappy because I had to miss something. And so, I didn't go out on that Friday night. This is why I did really well in my standardized tests. So it was the fall. It was the fall of my senior, no.
No idea.
It was junior year, spring of my junior year. And I didn't do well.
Garrett, I'm actually really interested in your perspective on this, the, the time shift of when all this stuff happens. Is it, has it shifted dramatically in the last couple of years or is it kind of a gradual thing? I mean, what's your, come and, you should come and sit with us, really.
Yeah.
You should be part, you should be part of this discussion. You should sit over there.
I think it's been a gradual shift. Um, but as Sean pointed out, um, it's, it's a big deal for teenagers in their developmental process. Um, yeah, the acceleration with how ED is used now, early decision, um, the introduction of ED2 has a lot of students kind of now planning multiple rounds and, and kind of, in my opinion, taking, it's taking the focus away from those things we discussed earlier of students identifying the most important factors to them in their process and putting a focus back to, back on to what schools are offering, what opportunities within their admissions cycles, and how do I navigate that as opposed to saying, well, well, despite college XYZ offering early decision, it doesn't fit into what I see as my plan and what I know of myself and my interests. So I think, I think it's clouded the vision of teenagers much more. Um, you mentioned the marketing earlier. Yeah. I mean, the marketing budgets, I, I haven't seen any numbers from colleges, but I imagine how astronomical they are. And technology, right? Social media and even as you mentioned earlier, Chris, um, colleges reaching out mid-cycle after students have applied and saying, hey, like, we're inviting you to, to shift your application from early action to early decision. And now you have a student who, who may have been in a pretty good place as far as planning goes and considering those things that, that are, are what they should be using as decision-making factors. And now a, a complete wrench has been thrown into their plans because now they think the college knows something that they don't and now I've got to act on it. Um, so, so yeah, it's, it's a literal kind of walk through a minefield for a teenager in, in trying to navigate all of this. Um, but yeah, it's definitely accelerated with, with the, the time scale for, for students. Um, we were just joking earlier about senior evening presentations in the spring, um, of junior year. Don't know that that's going to happen, but it's a reality where we, we want, we want people to have all the information that they need in order to, to be comfortable in making those decisions the right way. But, but it's hard to know kind of where it is. And, and then you get kids talking amongst themselves, uh, middle school as early as elementary school. And, um, you know, those are other factors as well. So I think I answered your question a little long-winded.
Oh, you did. It was great. Thank you. As you know by the conversation, the answers can be, they can go all over the place.
Definitely, definitely.
There's no hard and fast rules here.
But I think to that point, what occurs to me as we're talking about this is how do these shifting timetables then impact a student's ability to have a full high school experience? And how does that then cut into what should be all those moments of, you know, interest building and, um, trying different things and taking the safe risks with your education? It, it, it makes it a very different experience, I would think.
Well, and there was another statistic talking about back in the eighties, or was it? In the, in the early 1980s, 19% of students enrolled in the Princeton Review SAT course starting January before their junior year. Now, nearly two-thirds do. So, I've never had a junior in high school, um, but from what I understand, that is a critical year of pushing yourself academically, the workload and just proving out what you can do as a student and, and, and getting that on paper for these applications. So even to just push that SAT prep, you know, to the fall of that year instead of the spring, you know, that's, that is a big shift for a student to have to take that in and the mental pressure of that in order to get in however many test scores. The reasoning was to get multiple tests in and to have your ED ready and, um, but it does, it's an interesting point of how it all impacts the wellbeing of that student.
Yeah. And I think, um, kind of what I see, and I make a joke sometimes too often with students, but they get so engrossed in, in the deadlines and, and getting everything out early in the fall. And they kind of lose sight of the importance of getting off to a good academic start senior year. And that's a valuable tool and piece of information that the colleges want to look at and, and should be looking at. And it's the most recent representation of, of a student's academic experience and expertise in allowing colleges to make decisions or help them make decisions on application files. Um, that kind of, it gets swept to the side, um, in the fury of, of the, the earlier deadlines, um, and all these demands on the kids' lives where we should be encouraging them to, to dive deeper into, into the classroom work. So, um, that's another byproduct of, that's not necessarily a positive one.
Well, and just all the missed opportunities of being 16. Like, it's kind of stinks at times, right? But being 16 is kind of easy. It's a lot easier than being an adult who's got to pay mortgages and bills and jobs and like, what, and so we're pushing all of these things and pushing things and pushing things and moving things up and making things harder. And to what end? I don't, what could you, you're making, you're making the same answer.
I think I just spent like a half an hour going off and there's no answers.
But because, the reason I look is because I'm saying, and you're, you're making, you're looking at me inquisitively. So I'm asking to engage about that point.
What was going through my head is that like I felt, I typed out eight applications. I believe it was the fall of my senior year and I spent weeks, like, how much correction tape you had to go through in that typewriter?
I don't, I don't. We had computers.
I literally little slices of like the little correction tape. You had to type every line on it.
I had a word processor by then.
I'm older than you.
I know. Which, by the way, happy birthday.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's how.
So I'm kind of questioning how like, it was so manual. You had to handwrite everything. It, it, you, you didn't have a common app. You didn't write one essay. You wrote an essay for every school.
Yeah.
And, and you wrote a few of them for every school.
But you weren't, but you were starting, right? Your senior year. You weren't.
I don't, I don't, I think that there's some easier pieces to it now. There's, um, I mean, I look at the Common App and one essay and, and some schools, supplemental sort of 300 words, 400 words. It's not, in some cases, the work is easier. The timing is more, the pressure we put on it, um, is, is a lot more.
Yes, that's.
But I think that's, that's self-inflicted wounds. Um, so it's a long-winded way of saying, I'm not really sure. Um, and I don't remember 16 being, uh, there are parts of my adult life were much better than when I was 16. Seriously.
Well, sure, of course.
There are parts of yesterday that were better than being 16.
There are parts of yesterday that were better than today. I mean, let's just be honest. But you're supposed to go through these developmental phases and stages to become somewhat semi-functioning adults, right? And if we remove.
Someday it will be.
Maybe next year.
Maybe next year.
If you get one more birthday and. I, I just think, I'm, I'm constantly, as you all know, I'm constantly focused on every, the, the social and emotional wellness and health of our students, of our kids and what all of this does, what all of life does and how, and what are we doing for their future and what's being done to them for their futures. It's a lot.
So if, if that was the last thought, like that's a perfect lead into my closing thoughts on this, is that basically the pressure to ED has moved this whole process up and this whole timeline up. And I, like Callie, have a junior who's entering this process right now. And she's pretty far into it. And I just feel like at 16, how can you know enough about what you want to do and where you want to be to, even if you don't ED, these kids feel like they have to do all the research and know everything they want to do and where they want to be. So that if they do ED, they know what school to ED to and they've ruled out everything else. Um, and she's kind of in that place right now where she recently got an email from a school that she's on their list, that she reached out to and is communicating with and found out, she got this email saying, oh, we're going to be at your high school. You should come to our information session. And she starts flipping out like, well, I don't know anything about this information session. And I said, that's because you're a junior and they're for seniors. And she's like, well, how can I first go to an information session as a senior when I need to be done with all of this by? So it's kind of counterintuitive that all this pressure is now moving towards the ED or knowing if you want to ED. So you have to kind of back end all the research and the figuring it all out. And they're 15 and 16 at the time that they're trying to maneuver this. So it just kind of accentuates the whole shift in the timing and the shift in the process for the kids and how much more pressure there is on them and how difficult it is for them. Let alone what the parents are going through.
Can I?
Sure, go, go.
So, um, I, um, have a, a little bit of a different approach to this. I want to read one section that's sort of toward the front of the book. I, I think in general, what I felt like is that the introduction and the appendix were incredibly valuable. The, the rest is all supporting material in between, but, um, but I, I think the, the sort of setup statement for what I, I'd like to say is my overall pick is, um, from page 10. And it's, "College admissions is not about you. The prospective student or parent of a student, it's about the college. It's about being worthy, quote unquote, per se. It's more about fitting into a college's agenda, whatever that might be. Every school has different needs that change over time, sometimes even from year to year. Goals for the admitted class are set by university leaders and then left to the admissions staff to carry out." And then I, I, I think what I'd like to just sort of add on to that is that I felt like some of the most practical stuff that really gets to this idea of trying to figure out where you might fit is the appendix. And while it's called finding unsung schools, I actually feel like it applies no matter what school you're thinking about. Um, and it is all of those questions to sit down and think about and look into and research, what, what are the areas that are important to me as a person? Um, and using those as the elements of your decision-making. So I won't read the appendix, but that's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's a good, um, that, that first passage, that depersonalizing it, it's not about you. Right? It's not, it's, there is no, there is no perfect fit and you can be perfectly qualified and it may not, it may not work. So I think that's a, that kind of starts it really well.
Yeah, I agree. It kind of just sets the tone for the kids to know like, okay, so if you're going to apply to a school, you want to be within their parameters, obviously. You need to have, you know, the scores that they're looking for and, and check all the boxes. But once you've met that, it's just a lottery. And it kind of helps them, I don't know if it helps them, but if they can understand that concept, then hopefully they can take the personalization out of it. And no, it's not me. Like, I have the right qualifications. I'm a good candidate. I might, it might be a good fit for me, but it's not up to me.
Yeah. As a parent, I, I loved the appendix. You know, but I was reading, I'm like, oh, every, literally every page is highlighted in the appendix. I agree. It's a great resource and somebody could buy the book for the appendix if you're in your junior year and you're going through it. Cause it's just, it's so, um, aligned with really great ways to shape, um, the quest for what, uh, there are many schools that I could thrive at. And let me just create my list. It's not one singular, but this, this, it's, it's broad enough where you can really narrow down what is important to you with really great questions and different research that students can do. Um, and then to say, this isn't, I'm not narrowing it to one. This is a broad group of schools that I will thrive at. And let's, I'm excited about that. So I agree, Jen. That's a good.
And one of the, um, parts of the appendix that talks about, I think it says something about a liberal arts education. Um, fine campuses will allow you to pivot. There's a good chance you'll change your mind about your major. About 30% of students switch majors at least once. Um, also with the skills needed to keep up in a, um, job-changing market and ever faster rate-lifter places where you can get a good liberal arts education. It helps you cultivate skills in problem-solving, writing and critical thinking. Um, and it what I found, you know, um, a little, you know, upsetting in the book is that some of the examples they had, I think there was a boy who, um, they highlighted who got to a school and it's a liberal arts school. And then he was disappointed because he really wanted, I think it was computer science and he had to spend two years.
Chris.
Taking liberal arts classes. I'm like, well, that's a shame that he didn't, you know, research that. And then there was a woman with financial aid. I think she had her heart set on a school on the East Coast and she got no financial aid. I think she ended up at, um, another, like, I think maybe a state school in California. Just really goes to show you, really do your research because that's to go through this process and not delve into things like that, to think through. And those are hard conversations. I mean, the financial aid and things like that, but just to try to navigate through that before you obviously end up at a place and you're disappointed. So, again, I thought the appendix was really helpful. I think that that should be like a handout that we maybe put on the website or, or something. Cause I thought that that, it, it made me really, um, you know, it opened my eyes to a lot of things and, and made me think through things, um, in a very helpful way.
Um, I, I think the, 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 the piece that jumped out at me and I think, two things. One is the, um, the appendix kind of to me was a good perspective setter and remembering all of the different elements that it's, you know, cost is a huge factor. Um, you know, uh, understanding how the functioning of inside the school, once you're there as much as you can, those kinds of factors that are very more practical than, than kind of the aura of what a school might be like. Um, but I, I think what this first, the first paragraph I, I talked about, um, and, and I think we've been talking about this all night, is this uncoupling of your worth to this process and where you might land, and keeping those things very separate from each other. And I think that, kind of going back to the importance of not basing your intrinsic, any intrinsic value you have on that.
I forgot.
Next one up?
Yep, okay. So I actually have two passages to share, they're connected, but they're not from the same book. So.
You're really breaking protocol, you're bringing this up.
I got to tell you, I like so geeked out from this that then it sent me to reading three other books this summer. It was the most I've read in a long time.
So we would call this a text-to-text connection?
Yes. For our elementary school friends, this is a text-to-text connection. So, and.
You almost made it to elementary school.
I almost, I got to teach it, that's how good I was. So this, the first book is Never Enough by Jennifer Wallace, and she was actually here from Herd and Rye two weeks ago. And Jen and Dr. Byrne and I were fortunate enough to be able to go. And the subtitle of the book is When Achievement Culture Becomes Toxic and What We Can Do About It. And she actually had some students that are part of this book and part of the research from Welton, Connecticut. There are a lot of communities around here that she references and she, you know, goes back to. One of the things she says is, whether your kid goes to Brown or a school that ranks lower on the list does not decide midlife happiness. What does? Having good relationships, purposeful work, and feeling competent in one's chosen pursuits. We need to know this, and our kids need to know this. Instead of worrying about a wobbly ranking, research points us toward a better use of parental energy, emphasizing not where you go to college, but what you do when you get there. And Jeff Salingo says, so I'm not saying that it doesn't matter whether you end up at the Rochester Institute of Technology instead of Yale, but the differences are a lot less stark than we like to believe. Does going to Yale help? Sure. But there are so many other factors contributing to your ultimate path to success that focusing exclusively on this one narrow stretch of it seems out of whack. In the end, college is a staging ground. It's one of many stops you'll make throughout life, but it's not the only one and certainly not the last.
That, that passage I had highlighted as well, and it just brought to my mind, as you've read it out loud, when challenge success came to speak, and this wonderful graphic of, you know, which path did you take? And, you know, there's the straight line, and then there's the zig and the zag and the twists and the turns. And, you know, it's so, it's just such a good point to remember of our own personal journeys and as we reflect on the journeys of the students in the district and our own children, that the straight line didn't exist for any of us, and sort of embracing that road and being open to those core, you know, from the Never Enough book, I just felt like that one just aligned so much with the challenge success work that the district is doing. So I'm just grateful that that, those concepts are being brought in, you know, throughout the high school and throughout our community, because it's so important.
So I appreciate how those two elements fit together to kind of frame, I think, a lot of what our discussion has been tonight. And remembering that this is just one, just the next step of a kid's life and trajectory. And that, I think the other element that's also in Jeff Salingo's book is, you know, when they went back and looked at, they did surveys, I think, with graduates about, I'm going to blank on it now. It was about what they took away from their college experience. So it's slightly different, but it was talking about what were the things that you remembered about your experience? And it was the connection with professors, the interpersonal kinds of experiences with other students or clubs, or things that gave them an experiential memory of that time. And it's a similar kind of construct, in my mind, to what you just said, because all of this is really just a building block for which we keep progressing on the journey of who we are and what we will continue to be and grow into for our lives. And it's very difficult, I think, though, for kids and teenagers to grasp that. And so it's up to the adults, parents, teachers, counselors, to continually and consistently remind them of that, regardless of the fact that the process and the situation that's in front of them, if they look at it, all the uncertainty, it feels like it's such a massive mountain to climb. We have to let them know it's going to be okay.
I would challenge that there are things that are IT that Yale could never touch. Elements of graphic design and arts that you could blow them out of the water. But that's, I think that's, it goes back to the question of finding what you want, right? If there are, there is no, there's no perfect university, and university does everything the best. And finding that right path requires some freedom and some support to do.
And I think that's, I think for me, it's keeping the most important thing the most important thing, which is this child, this human, this person, that I am ultimately responsible to help navigate life as best as he or she can. And making sure that as the adult, I remember that it's a business, that it's a game, that it's abstract and random, that it really, at the end of the day, is about not a name, not a T-shirt, not a bumper sticker, that my child has to figure out what's going to work for them to make them the most successful. And keeping, reminding, in this whole crazy, chaotic place of life, with all the competing information and factors and things I know and things I believe and things I want to believe and things I wish I knew, that it's got to be about what's going to make it work for my kid and not getting caught up in the noise of everyone else. Because at the end of the day, this isn't about me, it's about what's going to make my child the best person that they can be. And that I'm happy that we have things like challenge success, and we have a guidance department that focuses on fit, and that we have my fellow board members who also see and value the idea that fit and students having that ability to make those good choices for themselves are what matter, and putting opportunities and experiences in front of kids with highly trained and thoughtful educators is what's going to make the difference for all of these kids. And we're really fortunate to be in a place where our kids get to experience all of those good things. So, thank you.
I'd say this is one of my favorite meetings of the year. And I think, you know, it's such an incredibly big topic for so many of our families. And, you know, having a counseling staff that's doing the work that they're doing and supporting our families and students through this process, but, you know, partnering with Rye Country Day to bring this guy here to town to talk to all of us in the community. So I hope that on November 29th, you're able to come. Jane, don't bring the copy and chase the guy around for his autograph.
Why not?
I thought you were going to do that with Jennifer Wallace, but.
No, I didn't even remember to bring my copy, and I turned down my free copy because I had already read mine, so I let somebody else.
Well, if you're interested in the book that Jane held up, the Jennifer Wallace book, there are a number of copies at the district office, Herd and Rye left, they had a meeting at the office today and left copies that are available. So stop by, let me know. Anyone out there want a copy of the book, feel free to come by central office. But thank you, Garrett. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Suzanne, for being here tonight. And thanks to the board for a really rich conversation and discussion. Start thinking about next year's book.
I need a break. I just told you I read a lot of books this summer.
She's taking a year off, you're great.
Exactly. Going back to the original. Okay. So now it is time for the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seri, no, yep, we take your comments seriously. And may need more time to process, yes, I do, and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Seeing no members of the community, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Jen Boyle. All right, let's take a look at the consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment. Okay, seeing no questions, can I have a vote to approve tonight's consent agenda? All those in favor? All those in favor? That's seven, nothing. Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. And on tonight's consent agenda, we approved the contracts for Devon Kern, so we will get an opportunity to continue with our data-based individualization PD for our teachers, continuing to support the teachers in the instruction of the science of reading. And that, oh, and, sorry, and we also approved our audit as earlier presented by our auditing firm, so we thank you for that. Okay. So, moving on now, we have presentation and discussion number two, a hefty policy review. Mrs. Boyle?
Yes. So this is a second reading of all of these policies that we reviewed during our last meeting. The one addition that we did add to the agenda is a clean version of, cleaned up with all the changes accepted, version of our attendance policy, student attendance policy. So aside from a couple of words that need to be capitalized, I have not gotten any feedback on that policy or any of the others. And I can certainly go back through and give a overview for each of them, but nothing's different from our last meeting. So is there any additional questions, comments? Nothing?
No.
Okay. So we will move these all forward to our next meeting for adoption.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to presentation and discussion number two, two, that is our Board of Education goals for 23, 24. So Boyle, if you could take one down, pass it around.
So this is an updated draft with the comments that Tricia had collected during the conversation at the last meeting. We used those comments to make some updates. I know we reviewed them the other day, so it should reflect all of that discussion from last meeting. My suggestion would be that if the board is comfortable at this point, that we would put the final version on for adoption for the October 24th meeting.
And certainly, you know, the majority of the time that we spent last meeting discussing our Board of Ed goals was around the second goal for instruction and professional learning. And so we had asked the administration to kind of go back into Wordsmith and to make sure that this is really reflective of the most instructive areas of instruction and professional learning for this year. And so that's really where I know the majority of it. And I think from my reading of it, looks pretty reflective of what we've been hearing where the focus is for this school year.
Just, I had been looking at it on the screen, looking at it, prints out, is there any way to make the font a little bit bigger on the, just all of the goals, the wording? A slight, like even one bump up just for readability would be helpful, if that's possible, to fit it in the page.
We can certainly try, because we're moving draft off of the bottom, so we'll work on that for the next.
Oh, right, yeah. If possible, I know there's a lot of information.
So we will, if there are any more comments or thoughts in the next two weeks, we'll make sure to send those along to the administration, and then we can have these on for adoption for our next meeting.
Great.
All right, wonderful. So now we have communications to and from the board. So we have board and district committee updates. Well, we had our audit committee meeting on October 3rd, we've already heard all the good things from there. Chris, did you have anything else you wanted to add from the meeting?
No, I think, what do you think? I think we covered it pretty well.
I think we did as well.
It was your first time through it, so I'm kind of like curious to hear what you thought of the whole process. I will say this again, because I failed to mention earlier, listen, great, huge thanks to our community members.
Yes.
Who take the time. We've got people who have professional audit backgrounds and bring rigor and good, you know, really great insights to this stuff every year. So thanks to them.
Yeah, it's a, it is a really robust, there we go, robust report, and a really good deep dive that is done into the financials. And so truly, if you have questions, if you have wonderings, if you have extra time, it's a really interesting document to go through, and you really do learn a lot about it. And it's quite impressive, the breadth and scope of what the district manages and is able to do with no errors. It's pretty cool.
Should we, should we call out the fact that the lunch fund didn't make it on this year? That we've cleaned it up? My real, my real accomplishment of 12 years here is the lunch fund is no longer in the audit report. The, I mean, I said it earlier, but the lack of items that are called out for attention is an amazing testament to this team's work. Gabby, you do an amazing job with all this stuff. And they, the auditors always rave about the support and the shocking speed of your responses when they do find even small things.
Yeah, I think, I'd say it's, there's been consistency across the board in terms of the ratings that we get back from the auditors every year, and the responsiveness of you and your team has always been a highlight of, no matter who the auditor is, after they've come to work, work with us. So, thank you.
We're very fortunate. We have a great team. We have a team that's been there now for a while. They are experts in their chairs, and it's really starting to pay off. I can't thank Kathy Vigiano enough for really doing the heavy lifting, because I don't have the ability to be there, and she steers it, and we are very, very lucky. So I'm grateful for that.
We certainly appreciate how diligent everyone is and the skill with which you manage the finances of the district, and that has put us always in a very good financial position across the board.
View it as my home. Like, this is, it's my money.
Yes.
Well, and we.
Well, and we are forever appreciative of that. So thank you. We have our future meetings coming up. We have a curriculum council meeting coming up on October 18th. Oh, and there's our policy again on October 18th as well. All right. So anything to and from the board? Traffic, pedestrian, all good? Oh, all right. So I'll keep that in my tickler for an update for next week. Excellent. All right, so, oh, very exciting things at the next board meeting. Our next meeting is in October 24th and it is about data, assessment data. So we'll have traffic, safety, pedestrian, and the assessment data.
This word on the street is going to be, it's a little different of a presentation than we're used to.
Ooh, something to look forward to.
Some new and exciting developments in the assessment.
All right, I don't know who's more excited, me or Tricia? Dr. Murray, I can't wait. It's going to be great. Who else is excited? No? Yeah? You're not going to be?
I might, I gotta find out.
Oh, all right. Well, fingers crossed.
But now that you know it's a new and different presentation.
It's data.
And it's data.
You have to make sure you're here.
I think you're going to have to move that meeting. Sorry, sorry. All right, well, now we've got a cliffhanger and some exciting topics coming up. So with that, let's adjourn for the evening. Can I have a motion? Chris Repetto, who may or may not be here next week, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. All those in favor? Seven-nothing. Thanks for joining us, have a good night.